Ladies and gentlemen, I am informed that we have a quorum which will be asked. And honestly, give yourselves a nice round of applause. You've been very patient, and I apologize for the delay. Really, thank you for hanging in there. And I suppose I should officially do this. I was told the last time I didn't bang that enough or hard enough, so there you go. I would like at this time to ask the town clerk to officially open our meeting.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Plymouth. To either the constables of the town of Halifax and the county of Plymouth, greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn said inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in the election and in the town affairs to meet at the Halifax Elementary School in said Halifax on Monday, the 25th day of February 2019 at 7:30 o'clock in the afternoon and hear and vote in the following articles. Copy your test, Thomas Hammond, Constable.
Thank you, Mrs. Gaynor. For all who care to and are able to, please stand and join with me the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I enjoyed being your town moderator so much the last time in August that I came back. Actually, it treated me well, and that was another reason I came back. But I wanted to welcome all of our town employees, all of our volunteers and appointed people on our elected and appointed boards, and most importantly, I'd like to welcome you, the residents of the town of Halifax, here for this special town meeting. And if you don't mind a small commercial, town meetings and special town meetings are very important as are all of the ongoing work of our town, and there are still a number of vacancies on important boards and committees. And I would ask you and the people that you know and connect with in our terrific town of Halifax to consider joining and encouraging others to join these boards and committees. Really, not only a lot of the work gets done, but you get a unique perspective of a lot of the issues in this town. And I think the people who are dedicating and sacrificing a lot of their hours of time will tell you that it's been worth it, I would think. And for the times that I served on committees and boards, it's been much appreciated. Just to review a couple of things, for those of you who don't know, you need to be a town resident and registered voter. I am allowing, just so you're aware, visitors who are not residents of the town are in a special section here. We are allowing the secretary of the Finance Committee to be sitting with them to take minutes. That person will not be voting, just so you're aware. If you are looking to speak at the town meeting, you need to raise your hand. Shout out, Mr. Moderator, make sure that I see you, and I've mentioned this to some of you who were here at the last special town meeting. I do have a visual challenge, so do a good job in waving your hand around and yelling. And if you do need to throw something, try not to make it something that's going to leave a dent. I have enough bumps and bruises and all that already, so... The idea here is we want people to be able to participate in town meeting, and you have every right to ask questions as we bring issues up. In terms of the process, the different warrant articles, as you may know, will be chosen by lottery as directed by our town bylaws. In the case where two or more articles on the warrant are related, and we do have such a case of Articles 5 and 6, if one of them is drawn, then the first one will be addressed and the second one will follow it. So that is the situation this evening. Once an article is chosen, it needs to be moved and seconded. The proposer of the article or representative will speak to the article to explain what it is and the reasons for proposing it. Then I will ask for the recommendations of the Finance Committee. As moderator, I will then ask, is there any discussion on the article? And at that point, people who want to address the issue, raise issues, raise questions, can do so. Once debate has been exhausted, a vote will be taken. In most cases or instances, we'll do a voice vote. If there is any doubt as to the outcome, a standing vote will likely be taken. Last important note regarding our town meeting and special town meetings. I checked this out. You know, when you check out quotes that you use, you have to be careful because I know that Abraham Lincoln probably wasn't either for or against the Internet. I know it's late, you guys didn't get that, and I apologize. But I wanted to let you know that I have actually researched this quote, and Abraham Lincoln actually did say it. So he said, "I am a firm believer in the people. If given the truth, they can be depended upon to meet any national crisis. The great point is to bring them the real facts and beer." I'm not making this up, just so you know, because I know there was some question about free beer being offered. I'm sure there's at least some bylaws and some ordinances against it, so I apologize for not being able to do that. But I wanted you to recognize that, again, it's terrific that you are here. And with that said, I think we can move to drawing the first...
Article 1.
Article 1, okay.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes? Select person.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the amount of $1,056,056.26, which amount shall be expended to the addition to the $977,000 appropriated by a vote of the town passed on May 8, 2017, Article 19, to be expended under the direction of the Halifax School Building Committee for Repairs and Renovations to the Halifax Elementary School located at 464 Plymouth Street, including but not limited to repairs to the fire suppression system and any architectural engineering and administrative work associated with such repairs and renovations, and including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectment is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
It's been moved and seconded. Can I get the recommendation of the Finance Committee on Article 1?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, I would ask that Charlie Seelig, our town administrator, explain the article for us.
Mr. Seelig?
Since you've been here for so long, I'm going to keep it extremely short. I think you have a lot of information about this project, which is to put in a new fire suppression system at the elementary school. Half the school right now has a fire suppression system. It is leaking, in the sense of air is leaking out. And what happens when that happens is water goes in, and then you get real problems if there's no fire. The other half the building has no sprinkler system. We had a set of architectural plans done. We went out to bid. The bids are extraordinarily high. There's no question about it. It's a lot of money. But the problem is, that's what the market is right now. We went through the procedure that the state has outlined for procurement. We did it properly. These are the bids that came in. This was a low bid. The alternative, if we don't vote for this tonight, is not that anything happens dramatically. What happens is that the maintenance staff here at the elementary school continues to plug the leaks with Band-Aids, almost literally. At some point, the system will fail, and then we'll be back here, whether it's a year from now, three years from now, whatever, and I'll be coming back and saying, okay, let's spend not $2 million, but a lot more than that. I'd rather not do that because, as you've all made it very clear, your taxes are very high. You don't like spending more and more money, but that's going to be the balance for tonight. You can do it now, you can do it later for a lot more. We do have our Building Inspector here, our Fire Chief here. We have a representative from Habibat Associates, who's our architect for the project, to answer the technical questions on the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seelig. It is my understanding, and I'll inform the town, that this will require a 2/3 vote. Do I see any discussion, questions? Yes. Please approach the microphone and say your name and address, please.
Tim Cundis, 166 Elm Street. So you keep talking about the fire suppression system, but it also is talking about electrical work and acoustic tile replacement. What are the costs for those two things?
Trying to get an answer for you, Mr. Seelig?
When you do a fire suppression system, you also have to be doing other work associated with that work. And so the electrical work is part of that system. The acoustic tiles have to be replaced. They're running along all the ceilings and in the classrooms as part of the fire suppression system replacement. The costs are included in the general contractor cost. If you notice on the budget sheet that I left there with the other information, that when you go out to bid under state law, if you have a type of work that goes over a certain amount, in the sense of it's going to cost you more than a certain amount, you have to go out to bid for sub-bids. In this case, what the town did was three sub-bids, one for the fire suppression system work, one for acoustic tile, one for electrical. These are three different contractors, each doing a piece of a larger project. Once that happens, once you have those bids in, the general contractors then choose which sub-bid contractors they're going to work with. They can pick the low bid, they can pick a higher bid, but obviously, if they choose a subcontractor who's bid higher than a low bid for a certain type of work, then their price goes up and they may be less competitive. So there's an incentive for them to pick a lower subbid. All this is done by our state law. Then what happens is we receive the bids from the general contractors for the overall project. So the fire suppression work, the electrical work, the acoustic tile, they're all contained in a larger contract with the general contractor.
Thank you, Mr. Seelig, to answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Got a few. All right. So then it says that, so that is directly tied to this fire suppression system happening, right? Okay. So now, May of 2017, right when my fiancee moved to this town, it says that the town approved almost $1 million for this to happen. So $1 million between May 17 and now we're February 2019. What's happened? Why haven't we gone out to get this done earlier when the cost of steel was cheaper?
Trying to get an answer, please.
And why are we looking for it now, basically doubled?
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to be able to explain some things, and some things, unfortunately, are a situation that that's what the market is. Let me go backwards for a minute. So in May of 17, well, actually, earlier in 17, we had gotten an estimate, an estimate. We hadn't gone, done bidding or anything like that, but got an estimate through Habibat Associates that it was going to cost a certain amount of money to do the fire suppression system. At the same time, we were looking to get the work done on the school roof and also the doors, windows, and siding project. We got that number, and the board secretary and the Finance Committee had some serious concerns. Wait a minute, it's going to cost this much? We want to take another look at this and say, just basically ask a lot more questions. They did that. May 17, we went back to town meeting. Town meeting approved the project. In the meantime, we were also going to be getting the roof, siding, doors, and windows done. That part of the schoolwork that we've been doing had been drawn up. We had gone out to bid. We were ready to go for the roof project at that point through the summer of 17. We got that done. And what happened then is we got the plans done for the windows, doors, and siding, and then also we got the plans done for the fire suppression system. But those plans for the fire suppression system were not completed until approximately, I think it was late March of 18. We went out to bid. Bids came in on May, in May of 18. There were no bids. There were several reasons for that, as I've outlined before. It could have been that it was too tight, a timeframe between May and the summer. We only can do the fire suppression system work during the summer. You don't, you can't have students here, you can't have teachers here while that works going on. But it looked like, based on the comments we got from the fire suppression folks, that A, they were already booked by that point. Their dance cards were full. We couldn't have gone out to bid any earlier because the plans weren't done, but by the time we did go out to bid, their dance cards were full. Second is, we talked about general contractors and sub-bids or subcontractors. The, sorry, listening to somebody's cellphone going. The, if you're a fire suppression company, you might not, in fact, what we found out is you don't want to be the general contractor. You want to be a sub-bider under a GC. You don't want to take on those obligations that a general contractor has. So it was another reason why the fire suppression companies weren't bidding, because we had bid on the basis of them being the GC because the rest of the work was fairly minor in comparison. But we ended up with no bids. So then it's questioned, okay, we know we didn't get any bids this time. We know we want to now end, try for the summer of 2019. What's the best time to go out to bid? If we bid, let's say, the fall of 18, what we're asking those contractors to do is hold their prices all the way to the summer of 19. You've seen what's happening with steel prices. Forget about the politics of it at all. You just have to look at what's happening for it, and you notice that they go all over the place, and generally have been going up. There are other elements in all this, but contractors will, in essence, look at it and say, if you're asking me to take the risk of bidding in September of 18 for a project that's happening in June, and July, and August of 19, I'm going to put a premium on there to make sure I'm going to make enough money. I'm going to put a premium in there so that if steel prices or other prices or labor costs or anything else go up, I'm going to bid enough that I'm going to bid higher. So we didn't want to do it that way. You wait until May of 19, wait, you know, three more months from now, and we run into the same hurdles that we did last year. So we tried to pick the sort of magic spot of mid-winter, late winter. Go out to bid then. It's close enough to the time that the contractors can predict their prices. It's far enough away that not everybody's been booked yet. That's the scenario of how we got from 2017 to now.
Thank you, Mr. Seelig. Other questions? Yeah. Yes, the other people? Good, I'm sorry. You got to understand, when you're doing this kind of, that, I have no idea. I can see motion, but so wave them around. People who haven't spoken yet, please? Yeah, I'm sorry. Sir?
Mr. Moderator, Mel Conroy, 7 Birch Road. I had a few questions. First, was FinCom approval unanimous? And if not, could anybody speak to any dissenting opinions?
FinCom approval was unanimous.
Secondly, based on, I realize it's early in the budget season, but based on current projections, how much money is projected to be left under the levy limit if this article is approved?
Get an answer for that, can we, please?
Yeah, can I have this number read down?
I don't know that the Finance Committee, I mean, they might say otherwise, but I'm hoping they agree with me. We haven't gone far enough down the road in terms of making budget recommendations. We know we have enough money to fund this project under the levy limit without a significant impact on other budgets, in the sense of we should be able to maintain the same level of services that we have now. Now, if people are coming in with budget increases for requests, for new services, for additional personnel, for an upgrade in programs and such, there's going to be some jockeying for position there. And we're, you know, yes, we're making a decision. If you make a decision tonight to fund this project, that there are going to be things that we may very well say no to. But based on the numbers we do have, we know we can fit this in without decreasing services, decreasing programs, decreasing personnel. But of course, the final thing is we say no. Let's say it's two or three years from now, we may not be in that position. And one of the things that the townspeople were very explicit to us several years ago is that they wanted this project to be under the levy limit, not dead excluded, because they didn't want even more taxes piled onto the operating budget.
Charlie, I want you to sit right there because I want you to hear something. So let's just talk about how the Finance Committee, because I know Malia served on it, how we like to keep money that's unused, and we typically like to go into a budget season not spending $300,000. And so last year when we were doing budgets, we had on the agenda to pay for the debt for the senior center, and that was still leaving $300,000 unused on the levy. And so when we did last year's budgets, before we even looked at budgets, we took the $300,000 and put it aside, and we took what we thought was going to be the debt payment for the senior center and we put it aside. And then what was left is what we were trying to do with the budget. So my understanding is because the senior center did not pass, that the money within the levy is what's going to be used in order to make the debt payment, and that $300,000 still is left untaxed. So I just need that verification before we start the budget season.
See, even that we have a little bit more money than that because we knew that this fire suppression project was on the line, and that we had left money for the principal and interest payments for that, too. So we were, we should, like I said, we should be able to make this. And I should, I don't know of any reason. Again, it's going to be a situation, if we say yes to this, which is new in us, that when the Finance Committee's looking at budgets as they come in and making budget recommendations, they'll realize that there's not an infinite amount of cash, and that they may, for a department coming in and asking for a budget increase for new programs and services, that we may be saying no. I mean, that's commonplace. That's what's happened in other years. But we can do this right now with the budget we've got.
Questions? Discussion? Again, wave, wave? Yes, I'm sorry.
Tim Cundis, 166 Elm Street. So it looks like the system that was installed in '93 was with non-galvanized pipe. It was designed to be a wet system, but doesn't say any reason why it was used as a dry system. And the longevity of a wet system should be four to 50 years. It's 2019, so to my math, that's 26 years, and it's failing. So why didn't we just keep it a wet system like it was designed? And then if we're getting a proposal for a wet system, it better last 40 to 50 years if it actually passes. And somebody last minute, four years from now, the Building Inspector's, I'd say, eh, we're just going to do it dry just because it's, you know, less risky and, you know, being in New England, it's a cold area, the pipes might freeze. Well, if that's the case, then they got to be held accountable. It should be a dry system, maybe. And if it's a dry system, how much is that going to cost, and what's the longevity of that?
Okay, let's try to unpack that. Can you have some questions? Thank you.
We're starting to get into the technical side of this, and so I may ask for assistance on these questions and call a friend in essence. The, what happened in '93, and I wasn't here, and as I mentioned, I don't have my DeLorean. It's, I'm still in the shop even after a couple of weeks. The guess is, in fact, the very problem the previous speaker mentioned about cold winters in New England and in Halifax, is the reason why they switched over to a dry system, in that we, the pipes that were running were going into areas that were prone to freezing. In fact, we've seen that happen with the heating system, in that some of the heating system in the school was built, and we've had pre-disasters. I mean, I think a few years ago, the school ended up with over $100,000 of damage because of leaks in the heating system, because of pipes freezing and such. Realizing all that, the work that was done with the roof and associated insulation and such was that it was designed with the idea that the pipes that would be part of the fire suppression system in the future would be in areas that held heat. In fact, they made, they came here during the coldest days a couple of years ago, and after we had finished the roof work and measured the temperatures in those areas, and those areas were in the 50s. They weren't down below freezing. That's why the new suppression system is a wet system. We can't just simply convert from dry to wet because right now, the current system is so damaged that it won't hold. If we put water in the system, we've talked about the air leaks, instead of leaking air, you've got leaking water. You've got automatic damage that's going to happen with trying to fill those systems with water at this point, if they're going to have them in there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I'm going to, if the Fire Chief or representative from Habibat Associates or the Building Inspector can speak more to that issue, I'm happy to relinquish the right to them.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, we have a representative from Habibat Associates, the architect. Will you be allowed to speak?
Yes, okay, absolutely. Thank you to answer the questions that have been asked, yeah. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak. I think Charlie hit it on the head. The system may have been designed as a wet system, and when you convert it from a wet to a dry, the materials are not the same. If we were to design a dry system today, it would be a galvanized pipe system or stainless steel system, and it would be charged with nitrogen. The system that you have here today is a black steel. It's charged with air. And the biggest problem with that is that air has moisture in it. And when you charge a dry system with air, what we see over and over again is that the air is moist, and it causes corrosion from inside the pipe out, and that's what's going on here. Having said that, you can continue to maintain the system as you have it, and you can replace knuckles, joints, pipe lines at will whenever you need to, to keep the air pressure tight. Once the pipes and joints leak, air leaks out, water comes in, and just continues to cycle deterioration in the system. So that's what we found, and our recommendation is to go to a wet system that pretty much replicates what you have, the black steel or galvanized. Really, you know, your call in the final design. And once the pipe is charged with water, it's just like any, anything underwater, it doesn't deteriorate like it would if it has oxygen and air and moisture attacking it.
Is there, and I'm the last one to understand a lot of this, except I think I heard the question also being asked about life expectancy of the proposed system. Is there any?
Well, I think the gentleman is right, that, yeah, a wet system is a 40 to 50-year life cycle. A dry system should last as long, provided you're building it with the right materials, and that's not what happened here. You had, you know, if it was a dry system, like I said, it would have been stainless in or galvanized, and it was black iron. And that's really part of the problem that you're seeing, and we would have expected 20 to 30 years within that kind of system.
Thank you. Other questions? Or that, not that I want to, not have you come up, but as long as there isn't.
No, it's just, I, Tim Cundis, 166 Elm Street. It just sounds retarded, stupid to me that we did one thing again back in the day, whatever the DeLorean and whatnot, but still, and now we're going to just redo it again, and then 25 years from now, we're going to be asking for $4 million. 25 years from now, we're gonna be asking for $4 million, because the cost of living and all that other stuff, you know? It's just like, to me, it's just ludicrous. Whoever was the one to say, hey, let's take this system that's wet, that's designed for a 40, 50-year lifespan, where we'd be revisiting it in 25 years from now, in the original system, whoever did that should be held accountable. Like, what, why was, whose who came to the conclusion to make a wet system a dry system, and just shut the switch off, and why? What's the reasoning behind it? And with that methodology, what's to say it's not gonna happen again?
Understood.
You know? And I also wanna know what the cost would be for a dry system, because the majority of fire suppression systems are dry systems, a majority of them are, not wet systems. So unless it's insanely high and even more expensive to go to a dry system the right way, then we need to have checks and balances and make sure that this system is truly gonna be well-maintained, and they're gonna follow the architect and the contractor's orders, and not, you know, play around with it as they go with, you know, a maintenance guy.
Sure, and in the middle of a lot of what you're saying, you are asking, why not a dry system, you wanna answer to that?
I wanna know, why not a dry system, what's the cost of a dry system? The guy over here just said that it's roughly the same lifespan, four to 50 years, but I don't know if everyone's, has a concept that they're proposing the exact same system that they did, that has a life expectancy of basically 26 years, it should have lasted another 14 to 24 years longer.
Let me see, let me see, we need an answer for you.
So, if we do the same thing, it's kinda like insanity, it's gonna repeat itself.
Okay, hang on, let's, can we get an answer to the question?
Hi, Mr. Moderator, Robert Churley, building inspector in town. I don't believe we're proposing the same system, and the engineer can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're proposing as a wet system to be a wet system. What happened initially was, it was a wet system designed 26 years ago that became a dry system, so it's not the same system. Had that system 26 years ago been filled with water as a wet system, we may get another 20 years out of it, but that wasn't the case.
Thank you, sir.
So why was a wet system then changed to a dry system? Did they just flip the switch, or did they, you know, then put more money into it to convert to a dry system?
See if we can get an answer for you, sir. Charlie?
I think, you know, one of the things we just talked about was frozen pipes, and that's our best guess as to what happened, and, you know, we've talked about that a, the system then, if it had been wet, would have gone for three to 50 years, it wouldn't have, because we would have had burst pipes. We've had burst pipes just with a heating system, let alone the fire suppression system. So if we had gone with a wet system that stayed wet, we would have very probably even much earlier than 2019 had problems, significant problems or damage to the school. My, you know, my best guess is that at that time, there was a decision made. Now, I understand you'd like to hold the people accountable who made that decision, and why they didn't then take other measures to try and do something about. I can't do anything about that. I'm really sorry that, you know, we don't have people lined up so you can do whatever you want, to yell at them, berate them, whatever you would like to do. And you want somebody to take responsibility for that. I suspect some of those people are dead. That's how long it's been, that's how long we've had this system in here, and that the building, you know, we had people who were working on that building and working on this project, that, that's how long it's been. So, I understand the resentment, and, but what we're trying to do is, we have a reality of 2019, we're trying to put the system in, we're trying to improve the school, we're trying to protect the school, we're trying to protect the people who are in this school. And I understand that you'd like, you know, maybe we can get an answer for what the cost of a dry system. I do remember having, you know, talked with the architects at Aviva Associates, that galvanized pipe is an upgrade. If it's an upgrade, it's likely gonna cost more. Now, do we have an exact estimate? Well, we might have a number, but let's put it this way, we just went through a situation where we had estimates, and went out to bid, and the bids were much, much higher than the estimates. So if we gave you an estimate today, it'd be, it might be very different than going out and getting the actual bid tomorrow.
So, just for my own sanity in some sense, that the system was not correctly implemented, that was 26 years ago, we don't have an answer to why. What we do have is that the system being proposed is different and is a correct system for the application as I understand it. Other questions, other, other comments? Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, hang on one second.
Hi, Robert Slager, 537 One Lakes Drive. I'd like to get the recommendation of the fire chief on this.
Chief, thank you for being here.
You're welcome. Jason Mavarris, I'm the fire chief, and I fully support this article. I think it's for the, we have an at-risk population in a, in a school. We have a third of the school that's not currently sprinkled. It's a wood frame school, which is susceptible to fire, it's on like a concrete building, and there's a lot of combustibles in the school, and I believe it's something that should be done.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Moderator.
Mel Conroy, 7 Bercher Road. What improvements have been made to the school to assure that there will be no frozen pipes and this will remain a wet system?
I can speak to that, I'm not a technical construction person, but I ask the question, and that is, since we put in the new roof, they have tested the temperature to ensure that if it is a wet system, it will not freeze.
I'm not sure how technical, but I can answer part of this. It wasn't just a roof, it was a roof system. The system was comprised of insulating qualities, too. We greatly increased the insulation factor of the building. I think the school people can attest to that based on the bills for heating. That's the difference. The system now can go in, I'm talking about the fire suppression system, into a, into an environment that is conducive to it, which was not the case with the original system. I'm actually, not that I have a DeLorean, but I had kids in the school in '93 and after, and I do recall incidents of freezing pipes, and that was the problem. And then somebody, I wasn't involved in town government at the time, but somebody made the decision that at least they could get some longevity out of it with a dry system. Not what we all would have hoped for, but in any event, this system is designed properly at this time, in my opinion, in the proper environment, which is the factor that makes the difference in this.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm sorry. Sure.
Gordon Andrews, 688 Pullman Street. I was wondering if we could have somebody explain exactly what it is they're going to do for the money, are they ripping out the whole system? Are they gonna piecemeal it? Are we gonna end up with some pipes that are already there? You know, what exactly are we paying for? And do we have somebody who can oversee this project? Because, you know, we've been told before that we have people that oversee it, but do we really have somebody that's gonna oversee the work?
Perhaps I can provide an answer to this. It's an entirely new system. Everything currently in the building is going to be removed, there's total demolition. Everything being included in this system is brand-new, and as far as people in oversight, we have the architect who designed the system, who is the same architect that we've used for these other two projects, and we've had great success with, and we also have had great success with the overall project managers, who are the same for this system. They're on top of it, they're very good, I, I have a lot of confidence, and yes, there will be supervision.
And on top of the supervision, I think that the group that gets together that includes members of the school committee, members of the board of selectmen, the, the building inspector, we have weekly meetings and updates, and we are really asking the right questions and staying on top of everything, because we really don't want this to happen again.
And again, I'm almost gonna ask for seeing eye people to make sure I'm not missing anybody, but waved again if there's somebody still, yes. Again, yeah, hang on one second, sir. Somebody back, yes, would you come forward? Yeah, you haven't asked a question yet, thank you. Thank you, yes, I appreciate that. You don't realize how important seeing eye people are to people who don't see as well.
Don Klein, South Street. I'm under the impression that we're replacing the whole system for the whole school, so, and do we have to do that? Because we're not doing any major structural value on the school, does the whole building have to be sprinkled, because we can just replace what's there now?
Let's try, get an answer for you.
Chief, could you answer that?
No, it's actually building is sprinkled.
Because I don't feel as though it's inherently dangerous, which is the way the code is written, for the rest of the school not to have a sprinkler system. I don't feel as though the fire load in this building is that high, it's a concrete building. The roof isn't, but the rest of the building is, and when the children are here during the day, everybody's awake. If you're not awake in your house, do you have a sprinkler system in your home, when your kids are sleeping?
Let's try to get an answer for you, sir. Yes? Building inspector.
So we have a system at this point that's starting to fail, it has pinhole leaks in it. It was a system that was designed in 1992. At that point, whether or not the whole building should have been sprinkled is, is being discussed with me and the architect. Here's, here's where we have, they maintain, if we're going to maintain this fire suppression system, it has to be safe and operable. Now, that means if the system fails for some reason or another, it's not going to be safe and operable, and then we're going to have to deal with it, like Charlie said, as it comes. It could be during the school year, it, it may happen a year from now, it may happen for two years from now. If we're going to tear the system that's currently here all the way out, then yes, we would have to sprinkle the whole system. If you were to build a, a school today, and it exceeded 12,000 square feet, you would be required to sprinkle the system. This school's 90,000 square feet, okay, so yes, it would have to be sprinkled.
Okay, sir. Because we're doing the modifications to the, that's why. Thank you for the signal. Thank you. Oh, gentleman with a hat, I'm told, again, I apologize.
Tim Cundis, 166 Elm Street. So, what is the cost for a dry system?
We did not go out to bid for a dry system, we went out to bid for a wet system, so we do not have that number.
But it would be higher.
What?
But it would be higher.
Well, we're talking a hundred grand higher, or we're talking like?
We're using galvanized steel, so obviously it's high. We wouldn't know unless you went out for bid.
I, I just, I mean, I, I understand with the whole, back in the day with pipes freezing and whatnot, now we got a better, I just pray to God that there's gotta be some sort of a, somebody's gotta be on the hook for this, and they gotta guarantee that we put this whole new system in, you're gonna get 40 years out of it. I mean, there's not much maintenance you need to do these things, other than just having an annual test, as far as I'm concerned, right? So, I mean, as long as it's charged with water, you're not putting, you know, all these minerals and whatnot in it, yearly testing, it should be fine. So, I mean, I just hope that whoever these consultants, or even the contractor, the general contractor, they can stand by their work, and then 10 years from now, if it shits the bed, we have some recourse.
Understood.
And not be like, oh, well, now we have to do it again. So, and I just don't understand some of these breakdowns in the last page of, as far as some of this money where it's going, like, for, okay, so the acoustic tile, fire suppression, the electrical work, that's roughly like 1.2, 1.3 million, but then there's the number above it for the general contractor of 1.7. So are you giving this guy 400 grand just for him doing the work? Or is it, you know, what is the, is that the labor?
Okay, we'll try, get, try to get an answer for you, hang on one second.
And that's?
Yep.
Or the other questions about the lower ones?
So a GC will do all the other work that's necessary for the project. So for instance, if there's any carpentry work, as an example, that wasn't, so we talked about subbits, if it's a subbit under a certain amount, then the GC handles that. So any work that's included in the project that doesn't fall under those three categories, the fire suppression system, the acoustic tile, and the electrical work is done by the GC. And also, the GC has to coordinate all the trades and handle all the administration and paperwork for the project. I understand, again, it's a lot of money. Again, we went out to bid, went through the procedure that is in state law to do this, these are the numbers that came back, and would like to think maybe there's ACME GC out there that could have supplied a lower bid. There isn't. If there was, they would have bid. That, and these are the numbers that we got from the firms interested in doing this work at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Seeling. Are there additional questions or new ground? Go ahead, please.
Robert Slager, 1 Lake Drive. I'd like to make a motion to move the question, please.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Because I wanna make sure we don't cut discussion, has to move that the article be moved to a vote. Seeing none. This is a challenge, because it is a two-thirds vote, so I think if it doesn't, if it's reasonable, I'd like to see, I'd like to do a standing count for this. Is that reasonable for me to ask? Let's do that.
You have to get the counters.
Okay. So, hang on one second. All right, my apologies. To move the question, I just said we need a, a voice vote. All those in favor of moving the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Oh, that was easy. Now for the different part, now can we, we need counters coming forward in order to do a standing.
Unless you wanna try first, and then try.
Okay, we'll try, we'll try for a voice vote. I, I'm not really great at the two-thirds thing, but let's give it a shot. All those in favor of moving Article 1, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And you oppose?
No.
Actually, I think we got more than a two-thirds in that one. Okay, so Article 1 passes. Town clerk, next number.
Article 6.
Article 6, and as I announced earlier, that's one of two related articles, so we would actually go to Article 5 first, am I correct in that?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
We use the proposed question, we said move and not pass, so I just want everybody to be aware of that is the vote that supports the article.
Well, it's, again, my, my recollection was we moved the, the question, and we did vote, did every, I almost was saying, do you understand what we just did, to make sure? I did, I did think, did I, did I misspeak?
No.
No. So we're, we're pretty clear on that, I just wanna make sure, you know? I don't want anybody calling me up at 3:30 in the morning and saying we missed that one, so. All right, so Article 5.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I move that the town vote to approve the agreement for payment in lieu of taxes for real and personal property, the pilot agreement dated February 25th, 2019, among and by the town of Halifax and the solar energy generation company, Green Apple Farms, Roman numeral four, LLC, or its eligible assignee, for its proposed facility on Franklin Street, as such pilot agreement was negotiated by the Board of Assessors on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
So we need that to be moved, it's been moved and seconded? You wanna speak to the articles, sir? Oh, well, I'm sorry, recommendation of the finance committee.
The finance committee recommends.
Finance committee recommends, select person, Milkus.
Yeah, this, as we've done in past solar projects, or the last solar project, the Board of Assessors was authorized to negotiate a pilot agreement. Basically what this does is, instead of actual real estate taxes, they make a lump sum payment to the town for everything on the property, the value of their system, and the land underneath it. This is going to generate for the town of Halifax, $19,719.36 per year. We're currently We're currently receiving for taxes on this land 33,260...
33,260.
Oh, I just got the numbers. Oh, I'm telling you, the number's 32,6864 in taxes currently.
3,000.
Oh, 3,000, okay.
All right. It didn't sound like much of a bargain the way you were saying.
All right, all right. I stand corrected. $3,268.64 is what we are currently receiving. It's a net to the town of $16,450.72, I was trying to beat everybody who's doing the math up there. It's a deal for the town. It continues on for quite a while. It's better than what we're doing now. It's a win-win.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Can wave your hands. I'm sorry, come, come?
Yeah, you have to jog, that's right.
Thank you, appreciate that too. Don't hurt yourself, don't fall.
Mel Conroy, Seven Birch Road. As part of the pilot agreement, is there a site cleanup? Should the property be abandoned?
Yes, there is a demolition provision in the pilot agreement. Actually, I misspoke. Decommissioning agreement.
Decommissioning, thank you. Other questions? On my court... Oh, I'm sorry, yes, please.
Bill Hinckley, Twin Lakes Drive. And my question is, does this escalate in a year-to-year basis and what's the timeframe for this agreement? In a lengthwise.
No. To answer your first question, it's $19,719.36 consistently, year after year. And the extent of the agreement is 20 years.
Other questions?
Yes, we have some waving.
I'm sorry. You guys are great. Thank you. I have lots of spotters, it's terrific. Thank you.
Crystal Newitz, 129 Circuit Street. What would the estimated taxes be on the equipment that would be there if that have equaled what the pilot agreement was?
I don't have that number in front of me. I don't know if...
I just want to make sure that we're getting at least what the real estate and the equipment taxes would be.
We're getting the most we can get. What's happened over the years is the state has decreased the amount of subsidies for solar installations. So it's become very problematic to even get any kind of reasonable numbers because there's an underlying current that the state is kind of questioning whether they in fact are taxable at all. So we took the position of let's get what we think is a fair price, and that's what the Board of Assessors did. And this was the best agreement. I think we were all very much in agreement with that.
Other questions? Yes. Dave Rossini, 6 Darren Road. I don't understand why it's fixed for 20 years. My taxes go up every year, a small amount, even if it was just a percentage. I mean, they're making money. If they're going to keep making money, why are they going to have to pay at a lower rate when my taxes keep going up and up and up and up? Can I have any answer for you, sir?
I don't know that I can answer it completely, but over the course of time, the amount of electricity that's produced also diminishes, so that the value of the equipment diminishes. 20 years has been the standard. This is what we went by. I personally think this was the best arrangement we could get at this time based on all the factors.
So another hand, yes?
Amy Troops, Tannehill Side. What does the decommissioning contract mean? Like, does it mean that they take all of the trash and... Because the solar panels become unusable and remove them and they won't be hazardous waste left here? Is there any bond left for us just to secure it? And also after the 20-year timeframe, what happens to their tax base then?
Yes, there is provisions for the decommissioning. There is bond money and/or cash. It's to their auction. At the end of 20 years, if in fact they do decommission, then there is theoretically scrap value that they're anticipating to help them defray the costs of their bonding and their decommissioning. I forgot what the second part of your question was.
The tax base, like they'll only have the $19,000 and change, and they were at $3,200. What happens after the 20 years?
We don't know. The simple answer is we don't know. This year, the legislature is actually going to tackle the whole question of solar fields. They're going to decide whether they are in fact taxable or not. Right now, the language is so vague, nobody really knows. And in many communities, it's actually been challenged that we can even enter into a pilot agreement. So we're taking advantage of that now because the sentiment is that it may change so that the state is in such a way encouraging solar projects, they're going to make it not taxable. That's the sentiment that we're working under. So I can't answer your question directly. I don't know what's going to happen in 20 years.
Have we asked if they could remove, like, make the pilot program illegal in any way? Or is there a loop? Like, if they made, legislator made it that it was untaxable, could they go back and... You know what I mean?
Once we have an agreement, we have an agreement.
Other questions?
I don't see any.
Am I not seeing any?
No.
I would entertain a motion to move the question ending discussion. All those signify by saying aye, favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the question then is actually moved at this point. Am I doing this correctly, Jen, folks?
Yeah.
I want to make sure we're doing this right. So all those who are in favor of Article 5 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 5 passes. As we had discussed earlier, we're going to automatically go to Article 6.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen and, on their behalf, the Board of Assessors to negotiate an agreement for the payment in lieu of taxes for real and personal property, the pilot agreement, among and by the Town of Halifax and the Solar Energy Generation Company, Halifax Solar, LLC, or its eligible assignee, for its proposed facility on River Street.
It's been moved and seconded. The recommendation of the Finance Committee, please.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Care to speak to the item?
This is simply authorizing the Board of Selectmen, or the Board of Assessors through the Board of Selectmen to enter into negotiations. There are no numbers. There are, there is no specifics or particulars at this time, just merely that we have the authority to enter into a negotiation.
Any questions? Need for further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of ending discussion and moving the question, warrant Article 6, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now to actually move to approve Article 6 as written in the warrant, all those who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 6 passes.
Article 4.
Article 4. Select person.
I move that the town vote to transfer $10,000 from the Waterways Fund for studies of Mont Ponce Pond and projects to improve the water quality of the Mont Ponce Pond. In said appropriation, be added to the Mont Ponce Pond account.
It's been moved and seconded. Can I get the recommendation of the Finance Committee on Article 4?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Care to speak to this article?
Yes, please. As most of you are aware, for at least the last 10 years, we have had algae counts over the Massachusetts Department of Health's recommendations. These algae counts have forced the closure of the Mont Ponce Ponds for recreational use. We have made some significant progress over the last couple of years with both the treatment type as well as the timing of the treatment. In fact, last year was the first year in very long time that the West Mont Ponce Pond stayed open for the entire season. We did, however, have to close East Mont Ponce Pond in late August of last year. We have received a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We also have excess funds in an account from a previous appropriation for the treatment of the ponds. And those sources of funding along with this $10,000 that we are requesting today would enable the town to treat both the west and the east Mont Ponce Ponds this spring. If we are unable to fund the $10,000 this evening, then we will only have enough funding to treat just one of the ponds. And if we were to wait and not fund this request until the annual town meeting in May, then the timing of the treatment would be after July 1st, which because of the timing of the algae bloom would make the treatment ineffective. And that is why we are asking for this treatment at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Roy. Any questions? Need for any further discussion? See... Oh, I'm sorry. This one. Please.
Erica Rossini, 6 Darren Road. Roughly how much has been spent on treatments in the last 10 years or so?
Probably several hundred dollars, but I know with this treatment, I mean, $1,000, I'm sorry.
We have trouble with decimals, all right? We're working on that.
We're getting a grant for about $125,000. We have some leftover funds again and a previous appropriation. We've worked with DNP, DEP again. We've made significant progress. You know, as you know, we've worked with the City of Rockton and their management of the ponds. And last year was such a success for being able to have the West Mont Ponce open for the entire season. So again, we've learned through working with a whole group of people that we have brought together to be the experts in this issue. And the way that we've been treating it and the timing of things have really improved. And we don't want to lose that momentum of keeping these ponds healthy. So we are requesting that we do it this spring.
Was getting legal counsel. It's always good for me. Keeps me out of jail, to be honest with you. Any further discussion questions? And again, I thought I saw another hand, but I'm not sure. Not seeing any? Okay, because it's been moved and seconded, I keep asking for ending discussion, I guess we can move the question directly as I understand it. So I apologize for wasting any of your time for those. I just wanted to cover the bases to make sure that nobody comes back and says you forgot to do something. So seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of this article, Article 4, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 4 passes.
Article 2.
Article 2. Mr. Troy Garen, yes.
I move that the town vote to transfer $7,300 from Article 32 of the annual town meeting in May 14, 2018, to repair, replace police station havoc units, to Article 30 of the annual town meeting in May 14, 2018, to repair, replace highway behind garage doors, to be added to $21,700 previously appropriated for a total of $29,000.
It's been moved by Mr. Garen. We get a second for that?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Can I get a recommendation from the Finance Committee, please?
The Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee recommends. Care to speak to the article, Mr. Garen?
The money of the $21,700 was previously allowed in May 4, 2018. Unfortunately, the bid came in higher, the low bid came in higher than the money we had available to, to our asking to transfer this money at this time.
Any need for further discussion? Not seeing any? Not seeing any? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of passing Article 2, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 2 passes, which leaves only Article 3 left. So it's the last article of the evening, as I understand it.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $4,500 from undesignated fund balance to upgrade the town's website.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a recommendation of the Finance Committee on Article 3?
On a three-to-one vote, the Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends.
Mr. Moderator, I'm going to ask for a town administrator to explain this article in the town's website.
Mr. Seeling.
Won't be the last time I'll be up here for tonight. Obviously, we have a town website. We have a firm that has been handling the hosting and management and maintenance of it for us. But as you've seen with your own software and your computers, at some point, for instance, Microsoft says, we're not going to support Windows whatever. Same thing's happening with the software for the website. What we've been told by our firm, which is Virtual Town Hall and now Civic Plus, is that at the end of April, that's the end of life for the software. They're not going to support it any longer, which means that the site goes boop-boop, disappears. So we need to, one way or the other, upgrade the site. I believe we're doing this, we agreed on the 45. So we've got a couple proposals, one of which was from Granicus, which I actually liked a lot better than the Virtual Town Hall and Civic Plus. But that's going to be $7,500 for the upgrade. It's going to be an additional $1,000 per year for maintenance. So talking with the Finance Committee, talking with the Board of Selectmen, made a joint decision that the best thing for the town, given finances and everything, is to continue a Virtual Town Hall, Civic Plus in this case, but it'll be at a $4,500 one charge, and then we'll continue to maintain the system through that. It won't necessarily be with all the bells and whistles possibly that Granicus might provide, but we'll be spending less money. We're a small town. We don't necessarily need the fanciest of websites, but we do need a website. One reason is legally. We're now required by the state to in fact post various things on our website, so we've got to add them. And the other is just on a practical basis. As much as there are plenty of places to put information up, they don't work the same way as a website does and provide the same archival value, for instance, that a website will do. So we do need to do the upgrade, one way or the other. We do need a website, so my request is for the $4,500.
Thank you, Mr. Seeling. And you know, in the midst of all the other talents you have, I didn't know you did sound effects. That was amazing. That was pretty impressive. Thank you. All right, any questions, any discussion? Yeah, we've done all the things I think I'm supposed to do. Select person, Roy. All right. I don't see any further need for discussion or questions, so it's been moved and seconded. Can I get all those in favor of passing Article 3 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 3 passes. There being no other articles before us, I'm in, I believe I'm in...
We moved that...
It's been moved that we adjourned, and as I understand it from my long history of this town, meaning that it does not need to be seconded. A motion to adjourn has been moved and it's... And all those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm going to challenge for it.
You can the next, the annual meeting. Everyone, thank you for coming. You've been terrificly patient and I appreciate it. Have a nice evening.